I'd like to call to order the September 4th meeting of the Board of Education. In front of you, you have our minutes from the August 20th meeting and when you've had a chance to take a look at those, if I could get a motion to approve. Sherry, second. Hazel. All those in favor? Any abstentions? And there's no one else, so, thank you. Moving on to review and approval of the agenda, if I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Hazel, second. Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition and the opening of school reports with the principals. Dr. Lutz.
Yes, as has been our tradition for a long time, we like to use our welcome back, our first meeting of the school year, as an opportunity for our principals to come and share a little bit about the Board regarding their opening days. I'd like to invite Mr. Egan, our high school principal, to start us this year. Since the past, we've begun with our elementary principals, we thought we would let Mr. Egan lead the way for us this morning, this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. I had a running bet with Mr. Gusich that it would not start with me, so thrilled to be here.
Did you lose?
I lost. Anyway, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. We had a great opening of school. The week started off with a wonderful convocation led by Dr. Lutz, and I do apologize to saying to you guys, or saying to what you thought was to him, "Thanks for coming," because it really wasn't "Thanks for coming" to him, but I do apologize because somebody thought that. So, anyway, it was wonderful connecting with teachers and learning and growing together. A special thank you to our administrative assistants and custodial staff. They did an amazing job. The buildings look outstanding. A special thank you again to Dan Clark and his crew. If you haven't seen the high school court, the basketball court, it looks amazing. Truly, it's like a college-level court. Anyway, hopefully you'll see it soon, in games, volleyball games, and things like that, where we now can stream all that. And our track and field projects are amazing, too. They really look outstanding. On Thursday, we welcomed almost 1,300 students to the high school, just shy of 1,300, with only the energy that high school students can bring when they come back to school. They were greeted by an alarm going off when we were outside, but they certainly had a wonderful enthusiasm and energy. It was interesting to see that they had T-shirts, and every year they have T-shirts, but this year they had myself and Mr. Rothman, who is the 12th grade assistant principal, driving in a pink Jeep, and the back of the shirt. So, I'm not quite sure what the reference is there, but it's "High School Forever" was the shirt, and that was quite cute. It was great to see them lining the hallways and staircase, welcoming everyone in as well. You know, one of the things I admire about our kids is they love to have fun, but when it's time to get back to work, they're ready to work in classes and ready to go. So, it's truly a special thing about New Canaan High School. The first week always brings tremendous excitement and enthusiasm, but as I told the kids, as we went around to every class, there's no better day than the first day of the school year. It truly lights up my life a little bit, seeing kids back in the building, and I told them, there's no better day when they come back to school because of the life they bring. But we have 12 new teachers at the high school this year, two teacher assistants, there's a physical therapist, speech pathologist, and the best new assistant principal in the area. I joked with the kids as we visited the classrooms that Mrs. Carrero is the new and improved Mr. Gusich. New this year, we have the alternative school, and the kids and staff are really excited to be there. I was down there today, and they were really pumped to be in the space. This year, we have some new courses at the high school as well. We're continuing to expand our STEM offerings by adding another AP Computer Science course, also a new calculus course with a focus for kids who are interested in exploring higher level math, but maybe not majoring math in college. And we're expanding our interest in some electives as well. We have added interior design, too, and it's great having a specialist in interior design in the building in Mississauga. We'll continue to celebrate New Canaan High School throughout our weekly update, social media, and other daily announcements. And last, it's truly an honor to be a New Canaan High School principal. This is a special school and a special community, and I look forward to a great year. So, thank you, as always, for allowing me to be the principal of the high school.
Thank you. If there are any questions, they're welcome, too. Otherwise, we'll just have the next principal come up. That's all right?
Yeah.
Great. Dave?
Good evening. Greeting members of the Board of Education and our central office leadership and everybody in attendance here, as well as those tuning in this evening. It is an honor and a privilege to stand in front of you and speak on behalf of Saks Middle School. So, with that being said, our collective teams of administrative assistants, our custodial staff, our technology crew, all had everything pulled together to kick off the school year in amazing fashion, and the building looks terrific. All the systems were in place to ensure that we welcomed everybody back with little to no disruption. And a special thanks to our wonderful PTC, who also helped us put forth a great effort to see our vision leading into the new school year this year as well. The opening days brought excitement, and first by the staff, who returned for three professional learning days, followed shortly thereafter by our most cherished asset, our students. Welcoming 1,300-plus middle-level adolescents may sound frightening to some, but we consider it a joyous return to the new school year. So, it really was wonderful to see them get off the buses and out of their cars and enter the building with smiles and anticipation, and really just a great way to start the new school year. The building came back alive, and I was fortunate to be able to walk around and get into every single classroom and make an effort to get into every discipline as well on that first day and since. And I was just continually impressed and amazed by their focus and attention on the planned lessons, and it really did seem as though they didn't miss a beat. It was like the summer was simply a weekend. So, just to see that was really reassuring and exciting as we get going with the new school year here. This year, we welcome 19 certified and non-certified staff and feel they add to the world-class staff that we currently have in place. And our new students that we welcomed in this year seem to be off to a great start. They were partnered with a buddy, and counselors did a great job making sure that that buddy was with them, at least through a couple of their classes, and they had somebody, a little bit of a comfort level, to be able to check in with, in addition to any adult staff that they were welcome to through the New to New Canaan orientation as well. A few other updates for the school year. We've put a focus on communicating and celebrating the great learning and experiences that take place on a daily basis at Saks Middle School. To that end, we've begun the weekly newsletter, which you can check out at saksms.com, the daily slideshow that's playing on the TV shows around the building that highlights and celebrates the activities and upcoming events and work that students do while they're there at Saks, as well as our social media accounts, and we're continuing with the emotional intelligence work that has been underway over the last year or so. At this point, I just want to thank you for your continued support, and I'm really looking forward to making the 2018-19 school year the best year yet at Saks Middle School. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gusich. All right, who's next?
Well, we'll keep going in reverse order. How about we'll start with West for our elementary schools. Jan. I did say last year that we were going to flip it, didn't I? I thought so.
You gave us the warning. So, good evening, everybody, and I had the great pleasure of welcoming back all of our West School students last Thursday morning, standing out on the bus, loading dock, giving high fives, fist bumps, and just saying, "Welcome back" to students. I do have to say that it was great to see the central office staff join us. They were out there saying hello and good morning to everyone. We have a saying at West, "Make it a great day," and it was a great first day at West. We're using a quote based on some of our emotional intelligence work that we're doing. "There is no separation of mind and emotions. Thinking and learning are all linked." So, that's one of the quotes that we're going to be using for some of the work that we're going to be doing this year. We are focused on continuing our work with our school goals on empathy. Our students will, all of our teachers, have been given the book called Be Kind by Pat Zetlow Miller, which was provided by our very generous PTC. We're also using The Word Collector, another of my favorite authors, Peter Reynolds, as our Proud to Read aloud. We thought that was a great book to select because we're going to be teaching kids about some of the emotional words and how to identify them and use them in their life. So, we're going to be focusing around that book. And on Thursday, August 23rd, about a week before school started, we held our New to West for all of our students in grades one through four. Of course, we had our convocation on the 27th, and following later in the morning, we had our meet and greet, where our students from grades K, one through four, sorry, not K, come to West to meet their teachers. Everybody left very happy, and the following day was a couple of professional development days for students. One of the days was focused on rolling out the charter, and the teachers worked together with our TAs and our administration and our implementation teams for emotional intelligence to plan out how they're going to do the work of rolling out the charter. We're going to be using, as a district, elementary schools are using the book Chrysanthemum, again, developing lessons for that, for how to build their school charters. So, we welcomed our students. 66 students arrived on Thursday, kindergarten students, with their parents, because we use sort of a gradual release. They come to school for an hour, sort of learn the classroom rules, and we welcomed a total of 438 students to West with 28 new families and 30 new students. We increased kindergarten section and a second grade section over the summer, and that resulted in the hiring of two grade-two teachers, Eliana Felton, who had been a long-term sub and an intern at West for three years, and Brian Brady, who had done her student teaching and was an intern at West last year. We were also able to hire a long-term sub for Mrs. Drummond, our third-grade teacher, Cassie Bauer, who had also done her student teaching and interning at West School. And we have the pleasure of having Dr. Jennifer Nielsen, who is a school psychologist, who is the long-term sub for Aileen Duhon. We welcomed three interns this year from Fairfield University. We hired a new teaching assistant for ICT, Brianna Curcio. And we are the first school, which I'm very proud to say that is, piloting our new health education lessons with Jonathan Adams, Christine Orlando, and Mike Tisha, I believe I said that correctly. So, we also are very proud of our building and grounds and maintenance people. There was a lot going on at West, even though there was not much going on inside, there was a lot going on on the outside. We put a new drainage system in, brand-new toilets, all-new LED lighting, painting for Building One. Just stop by any time, it looks great. And then, our gym floor is in the process of being renovated. We have a fire drill planned for tomorrow, a lockdown planned for next week, and we're looking forward to our first family, our second annual Family Fun Night on September 21st at 5:00 p.m. So, it's been a pleasure. Lots of things have happened. I can't even believe all of this has happened in the last week. So, thanks for having us. It is a pleasure, as I'll join them in saying it's a pleasure to be at West School. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy.
Joey?
We also had a great start to the school year. It's hard to believe that it's just the third day of school, and we're really grateful for air conditioning. We had a great start with our professional learning day on the 29th because we had all of our teaching assistants with us, which we don't often have that opportunity. We did in June, and once again, we had all of them, and I think that served two purposes because it helped us in our work with the emotional intelligence and developing our staff charter. But I think it also just helped in helping all of our teaching assistants to really feel a part of our school community. We don't often have a chance to meet with them and talk with them and get to know them. So, having that opportunity in June and again in August really was a great day, and we have some great teaching assistants. So, it was a nice opportunity for all of us, and I think they really appreciated it. And I know our certified staff had appreciated the opportunity to get to know them better and have them involved in the work of the emotional intelligence that we're doing. So, thank you for that day. Our school looks great, thanks to our custodians, to facilities, and to our PTC. Some of the big projects with facilities in the front of our school, they removed our oil tank, which was an amazing process to see. Once they unearthed it, it looked like a giant submarine. It was huge. The kids would have loved to have seen that process. We had our chimney re-pointed, and also the LED lighting, which I think is a huge improvement in the school. It makes the classrooms look so bright and just even bigger, so we're grateful for that. We have a great custodial team of four custodians. They work so hard during the summer. It's amazing how much work is accomplished, so we're really grateful to them. And to our PTC, a lot of improvements over the summer, and they're constantly thinking of ways to improve our school and to enhance learning for students, so we're really grateful to our PTC. We have 27 sections this year. It's down two sections from last year. We have 518 total students. Our lowest class is our kindergarten class. We have four sections, which in all the time that I've been at South School, we haven't had four sections of any class. We have 75 kindergarteners this year. Last year at this time, we had 105, so that was kind of a surprise to us with enrollment, but it's a great incoming class of kindergarteners. We have 38 new students, and our PTC scheduled a couple of incoming events for new parents, which was nice. It gave them a chance to feel like they're part of our school before the first day of school. We only have two new certified staff members. We have a new special education teacher, and we have one new classroom teacher, so we were happy to welcome them, and several new non-certified staff members. We also have a new campus monitor. His name is Scott Penoyer, and he's a former Wilton and Norwalk police officer. He was a patrol officer, a training officer, a detective, firearms instructor, and former colleague of Hubie Smith, and Hubie speaks very highly of him. His last role was as the lead security specialist in the Weston public school systems, so he comes with that type of experience as a campus monitor. We're happy to report all of our buses were on time the first day, arrival and departure. All 11 buses were there on time, so big shout-out to Roy Walder and all the bus drivers. I don't think that's ever happened on the first day of school. Also, to one of our former parents, Dan Mazobris, who is the owner of a landscaping company called Odd Jobs, Odd Job, and he's done all of our landscaping, donated his services of his company for probably the past seven years. He does all of the landscaping in the front of the school, all the way to Farm Road, and just comes, never lets us know that he's coming. He just shows up right before the start of school and makes our school look absolutely beautiful. He has four wonderful children, but they're no longer at South. He just graduated his last child, but he came again this year and is continuing to donate his services, which we're just so very grateful for that. And just lastly, we have two school goals. One of them is around emotional intelligence, which will be a district goal, and another one that we have is all around collaboration, where we have so much expertise among our teachers, but sometimes there's just not the time to share that expertise. So, one of the goals is around finding that time, whether it's through peer observations, mentoring each other, co-teaching, co-planning, and for teachers to really get creative in finding that time, and for us to find that time for them to really share their expertise. So, I think there's a lot of power behind that goal. So, I thank all of you for your support and look forward to a really great school year. Thank you.
So, we're excited at East also to welcome the new year. I hope everyone has had a chance to visit the East School website. We have updated that with a lot of information for our parents. We wanted them to have a place that they could go and find all of the Welcome to East information that they may need as they start the year. And we also have a fun Welcome Back trailer. If you haven't seen that, I encourage you to go to the website. It's about a minute long, but just as a way of bringing excitement to everyone as they were getting ready for the start of the year at East. And the excitement began even before the first day of school. Similar to what Jan described at West, we also hosted a New to East event where we welcomed approximately 30 new students entering East in grades one through four. We also welcomed over 90 kindergarteners to a K play program where they came to the kindergarten playground before the start of the school year. They were able to meet each other, play on the playground, have snacks together. It was a way for parents and families to connect as well. And then, of course, we launched the year with our fifth annual Ice Cream Social on the playground. Thanks to Dan Clark and John Perna, it was ready to go. New drainage, Belgian block lining the playground, it looks fabulous. So, we had a terrific Sunday event there, right before the start of the year. Similar to what you've heard from the other buildings, we had our staff back for convocation, for the meet and greet to welcome students, and our staff returned very eager and excited to start the year as well. At East, we welcomed one new special education teacher this year, three long-term subs. We also had some retirements in several special area positions last year, and that allowed us to move some part-time staff into full-time positions, so we're excited to have those members of our staff now with us full-time. And we are also very excited to welcome some special area teachers from the West School staff, who'll be partnering with us each week, coming over to teach some of the special sections at East. It's a wonderful opportunity for those teachers in art, music, PE, ICT, library, to be able to share their work with each other professionally across the two schools and collaborate as well as they're teaching our students. So, we're excited for that this year. Our staff was hard at work, not only setting up their classrooms, but also attending those professional learning days that you've heard about with our teaching assistants. It was a fabulous opportunity to really have the entire East School community together on those professional learning days. We examined our East School charter as a staff. That's grounding our emotional intelligence work as an adult community, and then we'll be rolling that out with students as they create charters in their own classrooms this year with their teachers. On the first day, August 30th, we did welcome approximately 532 students coming into 27 sections at East. There were smiles all around, both for teachers and students. I'm not sure whose smiles were bigger or who was more excited because truly, those first days are special in an elementary school. I'm sure they're special at every school, but particularly so at an elementary school. I think it's one of the most rewarding aspects of the profession. Each year, you have the opportunity to start fresh and start new, and that's for teachers as well as students, and I think everyone cherishes that each August, end of August as that comes around. We do thank our PTC. They offered a wonderful first-day, opening-day luncheon for our staff. It was designed to be grab-and-go, but it was really wonderful to watch our staff take a sandwich and sit in our newly updated teacher's lounge, again, thanks to our PTC, and enjoy each other's companionship and conversation as they had that first lunch together. We also continued with our theme of thanks and gratitude that we began emphasizing last year. We continued that forward this year at our Welcome Back Assembly. For the weeks leading into the start of the year, we'd encouraged families and students to send in notes of thanks to some very important staff members, our secretaries and custodians. So, at our Welcome Back Assembly, we've presented those cards and notes to the staff. They are our secretaries and our custodians. Our secretaries work throughout the summer, welcoming new families, ordering materials, entering Power School information to make sure PTC directories can be, you know, ready to go. And our custodians did an amazing job navigating not only the projects that were going on on-site, whether it was painting, the playground work, but also working diligently to keep our building as cool as possible, you know, during a hot summer and into these days, first days of the school year. We're looking forward now to the year ahead. We're going to continue to build on the emotional intelligence work that we've begun around classroom charters with students, developing the emotional vocabulary with students. We do have our teachers growing that as a foundation for the work ahead. We're also moving forward with our whole-school student learning focus on deepening critical thinking in our students through the use of technology. So, we're excited to build on the work that we started in that area last year. Some new opportunities coming for students, thanks to our PTC. We're going to be offering a nutmeg book group for our fourth graders before school this year, and we also have our East School mascot, who debuted last spring and continues to make appearances at various school events, and is just adored by our students. So, we're excited to continue to see East, our East Eagle mascot around. And finally, on just a personal note, I watched our fourth graders arrive on Thursday, and I found myself in awe of how much they had grown. Certainly, they were taller, they were looking more mature, as they settled into their fourth grade classrooms, and I realized at that moment that as I'm entering my fifth year as principal at East School, this was a cohort of students that began as kindergartners my first year there. And so, that growth took on a whole new meaning for me as I watched them, and it was really heartwarming. It made me remember that this is what this profession is really all about. It's about watching and growing children, not just within a year, but across years, and watching them grow in so many ways, thanks to the wonderful staff and programs that we have here in the district. So, on that note, here's to a wonderful year ahead for them and also all of our members of the East School community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wall. So, does anyone have any comments or questions before we move on?
Well, I can't resist a comment, if you don't mind. First, I want to, of course, thank our principals and just say that they're such talented, accomplished professionals. I feel so fortunate to have each of them leading the schools that they're in. You know, the great work that we do here in New Canaan is really made possible through the great work that they do in their buildings, with their staff, with their students, with our families, and, you know, just remind it again just how fortunate we are to have, you know, all five of you, you know, each of you at the individual buildings. Also, share that our, you know, on that first day of school, the cabinet, we made it to all five buildings once again. This is the fifth year now that we've done that. We start over at the high school, go over to Saks, and then shoot over to West for the bus dismissal, and then we go over to South for the kindergarten, and then end over at East, watching the kindergarten there. I will share, Chris, you're exactly right. The first day of school is special at all five buildings. You know, it's wonderful to have a group of talented principals who truly are so dedicated and care so much about the schools that they lead, and it's heartwarming to know that each of you cares so deeply about those kids that are in your schools and the children that are in our responsibility every day. The, you know, at each of the buildings, there are stories from all of them, but I'll just share that our high school seniors were relatively well-behaved, which was thrilling in and of itself.
That was the fourth year. This is your class.
That's right. This is Mr. Egan's graduating class.
Senior class, too.
That's right. And Ms. Murphy's graduating class, right? Transitions could be a theme for us this year. Over at the middle school with a banner right out front, thanks to the PTC, as the fifth and sixth graders got off the bus, and it's so great to see them just talking with each other as they walk off the bus. They barely even see that we're there. You know, they just are so happy to reconnect and talk to their neighbors and friends as they're coming in. And then, of course, over at our elementaries at West, watching the kids run off the bus and run to the playground or run in the back, and, you know, all the staff that are out there just beaming, and it was just, at all three of the elementaries, it was so amazing to me as a former high school teacher that the teachers already know the students' names. You know, as they're standing out off the side and they're lining up to go back into their classrooms, I hear the teachers saying to the students how much they like, you know, Jimmy, I love how you're standing there, or Bonnie, you're doing a great job, and they just, they already know their students' names. We're an hour into the new school year, and I think that really shows just how much our teachers truly care about the students in their classes. And of course, those parents in kindergarten, there were some parents with big smiles on their faces, especially those with twins or even triplets in one case, and some others that were just sort of holding back their tears until their children weren't looking. But to all of them, I want just my word to go out that all of the children that we have in New Canaan Public Schools are in great hands, thanks to the five of you and thanks to everyone on our staff. So, we'll take good care of them, and they're going to have a great educational experience a year ahead of them, thanks to your good work. So, thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the enrollment report. And I guess, can we dismiss them, or do they have to say?
Oh, no, we can let them go.
Okay. You get to go now. Enjoy your evening.
Clearly, they don't want to stay for the enrollment report. No, I think they've been paying close attention to the enrollment in their buildings.
Thank you, everybody.
But I think we're all still adjusting to getting up early and getting here on time, so we'll let our principals go home and get a good night's sleep.
No, and thank you for making sure that we had a great start to the school year. Thank you, everyone.
So, although we have our formal enrollment report in November after we have our October 1 submissions and we work with our demographer, Gary and I just thought that it'd be a good idea to just touch base on this one more time, given that the school year's underway. And there have, as Ms. Murphy mentioned, for instance, over at West, we did have to make a decision late in the summer about adding a kindergarten section, and there were some others that we were wrestling with all summer long. So, just thought another quick snapshot would be helpful for the Board to get a look at where we are now that we've opened our doors.
So, in your places, I left copies of the full K-12 enrollment. You can see it by levels. Since two weeks ago, when I last presented enrollment, it has not changed significantly. Few students up or down. So, we'll begin the school year with 4,173 students, so that's as of today, not the first day of school. And then, we'll take our snapshot on October 1st, and I'll be back in early November to And then we'll take our snapshot on October 1st, and I'll be back in early November to take a look at the enrollment projections for next year and kind of take a look at that snapshot in time. I also gave you a copy of the elementary enrollment on the second sheet, and again, very, very similar to two weeks ago. The good news here is clearly we are well within our class size guidelines. So we're beginning the year in a really nice place in terms of our enrollment. And while I'm here, even though the principals really talked about it, they're the ones that have been very busy around staffing and hiring. When I was here two weeks ago, we had 40 hires to date. Today, the number stands at 50 total. So that's 27 teachers, certified staff that have been hired, 23 non-certified. The number, so the number's about 50 as we begin the school year. We are fully staffed, really pleased to say. All of our classes have wonderful teachers. This group of hires has been phenomenal. Very impressed with the quality of staff we have brought into the district. Kudos to our principals. They did an amazing job in terms of their hiring, so I'm very happy about that. And we're working now, hired four subs, and we're trying to build our sub list as well. Usually, we like to go in with about 100 subs, and we're closing in with folks that have been here before. We really treasure our substitute teachers, so we're really working on that. We're recruiting, we're hiring every day to kind of build that, those numbers up as well. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Gary. Does anyone have any questions? Brennan?
Yeah, just on the total number of sections in the elementary schools, is this around what we were expecting in terms of the change year over year? It seems like it is, but I just figured I'd ask the question.
Yeah, year over year, we're down four sections from last year.
That's about, is that about what we expected or a little bit?
It's a little bit lower, given the kindergarten numbers.
Okay. I got it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Well, thank you, Gary. I feel like I just had this update probably a couple of weeks ago, so this is not much different, but thank you very much. And we'll look forward to October.
Gary and the team get to do it every day in the summer.
I know. Moving on to the action items, you have in front of you the 2018 unaudited financial report. And when I, I know this is not the way we're supposed to do it, but I like to have, Joanne, can you just give us a little summary before I ask for a motion?
Sure. So what you have before you tonight is the final report unaudited for 2018. I plan to walk you through each one of the financial statements that fall within the Board of Education's responsibility. We'll walk through the final transfers for the year, which are a few, and then hopefully accept the report.
Okay, great.
Do you want me just...
Yes, please. Sorry.
I thought you wanted introduction. So I was listening to Chris and Chris said...
Sorry. I like, because this is such a lengthy document, I'd like to have the review before I ask for a motion.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. So as I was listening to the principals, they all talked about how exciting it was to open the school year. For the business office, this is our excitement closing the year before, so, especially this year. And it's true, we have a different slant on things, but this past year, the state of Connecticut launched a whole new reporting system. We went from what was predominantly a manual system with the EDO-1 to a totally automated system, which they call the EFS. And so we spent a lot of time this year mapping all of our chart of accounts to actually mirror the EDO-1 electronically, and it was a rather complex and long process, but we were successful, hopefully, in getting that accomplished. We ran a lot of testing against prior years to verify the mapping. And as of Friday afternoon, we concluded our upload to EFS. So between Friday afternoon and today, we've been preparing statements for the board. Just as a reminder, O'Connor Davies audits our financials. They'll be in next week. We fast-tracked them last year. It worked out really well having them in the process early. So we'll know by the end of next week or the week after whether or not we are having any financial adjustments. I don't plan to have any. But at any rate, they have to report them to the state of Connecticut by December 31st, and that's when the statements are final. If there's any adjustments, they will be recorded in the year and financial reports that are published by the town. So we can start with the operating budget first. Every month, I remind you of our annual appropriation, which is $87,618, $618,405. This past year, we have expenditures of $86,856,894 and encumbrances of $264,183, for a total of $86,121,077. All of these numbers...
Eighty-seven.
Seventy-seven, okay.
Yes, sorry.
All of these numbers have been reviewed and reconciled with the town, and so our financials mirror each other. I will say we have a balance left for the total year of $497,328. Overall, we expended 99.4% of our budget. If you take a look at salaries and benefits as one piece of it, we spent 99.5% of that budget. And if you take a look at non-salary accounts, it's 99.2%. So I think overall, we were fairly close. We were able to deal with issues within our facilities department that came up because of savings and other areas of the budget. And it really is a management process throughout the year in order for us to reconcile and come in within our budget. We always want to come in below rather than above. We never want to overexpend our budget because there's a lot of ramifications, obviously, for that. So just to highlight a few of the areas that you're going to see balances in, we have some variable accounts. Stipends and substitute teachers are variable accounts that ended the year with balances in them. We've had vacancies for long-term absences in teaching assistants and custodians, primarily on workers' compensation. And so funds were transferred in and out of those accounts. And then on the non-salary side, there's slight balances in employee benefits for payroll taxes predominantly, contracted and purchased services and other expenses. And so if you turn to page three of the document, we can review the transfers that we have for the board to close out the accounts. You're going to see transfers within each object, just to balance out within each object. But in addition to that, we had three areas that we needed to support towards the end of the year. The first is the property services account, and that was increased by $72,405. And there was a few contributing factors to that. As you may recall, when we did our 2019 budget, we had an amount set aside for heating oil, and the plan was to use about $200,000 of that to pay for the piping that went from the meter into the school, into the boiler room. When we went out to bid on those pieces, it cost, the bids came in at 277. So we made the decision to take 77 for two pieces of the three types of retrofitting out of the 18 budget. And so that was the biggest piece of the transfers that we have here. We have been able to accomplish some of the projects for maintenance that were taken out of last year's budget, hand dryers, mats in the schools, and those sort of things. Those were completed this summer as well. And then we had some specialist services that were required to do, like bid specs for the year, for the summer projects that were completed this year. So that's where the monies went for property services. With regards to the equipment account, we did transfer in $118,988, and we really tried to capitalize on an opportunity that we had from the supply account. There was a balance in the technology, equipment, and supply account, and we saw the opportunity to outright purchase some additional copiers and printers that we would have otherwise leased for the district in subsequent year budgets. So that's going to have a positive impact in operations moving forward. And so we made that transfer. And then there was some equipment for facilities that they really needed to help clean the schools for the summer and moving forward. And then finally, our fees account was just short a little over $1,000 on a $289,000 budget. It's really donations that come directly into operating, along with some fees and gate receipts and that kind of thing. So overall, we feel like we did a fairly good job staying consistent with the reforecast and still being able to return some funds to the town.
I'm going to take applause here for a minute. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Heating? So moving on...
I just had a couple of things, sorry. One is on payroll taxes. Can you just remind me the differential there, what that was due to?
So that is the board's portion of the FICA Medicare matching. So each year, we budget for, based right off the salary accounts, and we back off what we know people are putting aside for like 401 or a 403. That's the number that changes every year. So in this particular year, we've had some additional monies remaining because more people are actually putting in. So that's part of that variance. And then the fact that the payroll itself is under budget attributes to that balance.
Right. Okay. Thanks. And then the other one was a significant, obviously, the dollars are not huge, but a significant percentage reduction in postage. Is that just doing more things online relative to what we expected?
Well, that, and we actually brought the service in-house this past year. And we really had to live with it for about a year to know exactly how much we were going to save. We took a $20,000 savings, which in the total scope of things wasn't a lot, but we were able to streamline a lot of the process and save some money.
Right. Okay. Yeah, 50% savings is pretty good. I think that was it.
Yeah, we went from postage meters at each of the buildings to a centralized processing. And then just a few postage meters at the high volume or high need places, like guidance department here in the high school, places like that. So we're also continuing to find ways to use our online, like Constant Contact type system, the Blackboard system, to send out notifications and things like that for families. So we keep looking at it. Like you said, it's not huge in an $87 million budget, but it's, it all matters. So it's another way that we can try to save a few dollars.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for noticing.
All right. So on page eight is the federal and state grant reports. You'll see that, consistent with prior years, we take in about $1.1, $1.2 million in federal and state grants. The most money comes in from the federal government, and it's primarily for IDEA, for our special needs students. But there's other grants in there, Title I's, $100,000 plus. And this past year, Jill was able to procure for us a $10,000 grant for student achievement and student support, I believe is the title of that. So we have a balance of $132,883 remaining for carryover. And most of these grants are two-year grants, so we have an opportunity to use them over a two-year period. And that's really a 12% carryover, which is respectable, I think, of the process. So if there's no questions there, we can move on to the next. Included, as in the past, on page nine is a description of all of the grants for you to review. So moving into food services. As you know, we did have a new management team in our food service department this past year, and I think that they were able to really maintain a high level of service for our students and staff. And quite honestly, I'm very proud of the work they were able to do this past year. They worked very hard. So just to point out a few things, the revenue for last year was $2,236,879. That is an increase of $145,714 over 2017. With regards to expenditures, our expenditures were $1,953,775, and this was a net increase of, let's see here, $122,319. So there was an increase in the cost of goods, but a $145,000 increase in revenue. This resulted in a net increase in our equity for this fund of $77,650. We had planned to have an equity fund balance increase of 183. So the combined numbers, our fund balance increased by $260,000, which is almost double of what we had the prior year. So we have a half a million-plus dollar fund balance as of June 30th, 2018. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, we plan to have a review, an extensive review of our cost structure and our pricing for all of our food. So we're going to go through our entire lunch program in terms of what we're charging students and our à la carte lunch prices, and really compare them to cost and do a thorough analysis. And we're going to bring that to the Ed Resources Committee for review, and we'll decide whether or not it comes to the full board, if it's necessary, and what our plan is to actually mitigate some of these costs to the families. So that's our plan there.
So Joanne, I just wanted to make sure I understood. The actual 2018 expenses were $1,976,094, correct?
Correct. Did I say that backwards?
I think you used 2017 expenses.
So the total expenditures for 2018 were $1,976,094. And for '17, it was $1,953,775. And the difference between the two is $22,319. Thank you for putting that out. So it's a slight increase in cost, but a more significant increase in revenue.
Yep. Okay. Brennan?
Yeah, just when you go and go back and sort of review the cost structure here, I just want to make sure that we take into account the capital, equipment, and space and everything else, like we did with the facilities use rates, just so we bake that in. That's obviously not included here. And my gut is that, you know, once you include that, we're probably, you know, close to break even, but I'm not sure.
So the big factor here is we do purchase equipment out of this fund, not the facility equipment, but the actual kitchen equipment. And the one piece that we do not fund through this budget is the health insurance. So that's a piece that we've always acknowledged that is being funded through Internal Services Fund. When we report it out to the state, we do show that contribution.
Okay. Right. So this plan itself does run at a loss if you factor in the health benefits piece. What you do for the state reporting, because we just went through the binder that looked about this thick just the other day. So you do, when you put in the all-in costs because of those benefit costs, it is a slight loss in the program.
Makes sense.
But we want to get that all laid out there so that there's a full understanding of the cost structure in comparison to what we're charging families.
Right. And I think we should make it clear that it's not intended to be a profit-making entity and running at a loss is okay because it's supposed to be, you know, an affordable lunch program for the kids in the district, so...
Absolutely.
You know, that's the whole purpose.
Right. The two ways you could make more money would be to, well, some of the ways would be to decrease service, decrease quality, increase costs, and those are things we're not willing to do. You know, we're trying to make this the best food service program that it can be at a reasonable cost for our families. And I think we have the right team in there doing that work now.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to the next exhibits, which start on page 12, and you're going to see three funds displayed on 12 and 13, and they're the facility rentals account, the donations, and the summer school program. This facility rental program, the new policy, has been in effect now for two years, and we continue to grow into the nuances that are presented through our end users. However, I think that overall, it is achieving its overall goal to capture the cost of direct expense incurred by the district for overtime and energy and those sort of things. But then again, besides that, is to put aside funds for facility improvements that are just a natural part of wear and tear beyond the school use of the facilities. And I think that's been a positive thing. We've been able to do a few things for the schools, and so I think we should continue down this path and modify it as needed when it's warranted, and that's what we've been doing. As far as the cash donations go, we've had another extraordinary year, over half a million dollars in donations, primarily from the PTCs, the booster clubs, and the other wonderful donations that come in from the community. Cash donations were over $400,405,023. We spent almost all of it, $400,997. And these are all funds that come in to enhance the academic program in the district, supplement athletics in the VPA programs, purchase material and books, and also to renovate and beautify our facilities within the district. And there's been a lot of effort in that area in recent years, and it's just been wonderful. And then in addition to that, we have in-kind services where the PTC oftentimes pay direct, and that's $165,988. And it doesn't even include the wonderful things like lawn care services. And it doesn't even include the wonderful things like lawn care service that Joanne described. So there's so many other things that happen in the community that we just can't possibly capture. But it's really a testament to the support that the schools have here in the community. And then moving on to the Summer School Program. This again, I think over the last few years, has been recalibrated to really cover expenses with revenues. There's a slight increase to the fund balance of $12,000. I looked back to 2012, we were talking about it today, just saying like, you know, what was it a few years ago? And a few years ago, it was over $432,715 at the end of 2012. So there's been some real work that's been done to bring down that balance, reinvest in the program, and help us get to a good place right now. So that's where that goes. And then finally, moving on to page 14, which is our Internal Services Fund.
Can I just have a question on page?
Sure.
So Joanne, I just actually have two questions. So my first question on the Facility Rental, so. My first question on the Facility Rental is, I know the policy has been in place for two years now. Could you just give us a sense of what like the total revenue was, you know, pre-policy revision versus now? Just so, just trying to get a sense of the magnitude of the impact from the policy? Or have we pulled that apart between, you know, policy revision versus any usage revisions? And just to clearly understand the revenue.
So I'm recalling from my own memory of my first few years here before this was implemented, and I'll verify this, it was closer to $110,000. So it has bumped up, you know, a few, you know, $30,000 roughly.
And have we had any organizations, any nonprofits or others who, you know, have given feedback on that policy impact, you know, in terms of negatively impacting their ability to rent and use the space?
Well, I don't know if it's prohibited them from using the space, but certainly we have had some feedback because people are paying more. So we went through a process of communication to make sure that they are aware of the increase in the pricing, where it was an increase. And in their first year, we made arrangements to understand that, that they had already assessed fees. And so Brian was able by policy to make some adjustments for those folks. And then this past year, they have come more in line with the billing that we've sent to them. So we've tried to work with people, I think, in a very appropriate way.
Okay, great. And then my second question on the donations. So when we say cash donations, can you just elaborate on that? Is that, I'm just trying to get a sense of if we're, you know, the amount of cash handling that we're really doing with those donations?
Right, so when Brian and the board accept a donation, like a big one would be this past year, the Chromebooks sacks. They write us a check and we order the Chromebooks. We process them through our system, and then they're paid through our system. So that would be cash. We have other things like in-kind where the PTC will pay the vendor directly, like a renovation of a space, for example. And that's an in-kind, we still capture it because we want to reflect what donations are coming in, but we're not paying the cash out.
Okay.
So I think, Sherri, if I can refer, I think that the, just the term, saying cash donations makes it read as if we actually took in $405,000 of green cash. And people were actually giving it, but we don't accept cash generally.
They're checks.
They're checks that we have, so they're, you know, they're recorded on the ledger. There's checks that, you know, and they're traced and followed and signed off and everything else. But that's giving sensitivity to the word cash as maybe we can figure out a way to do that.
Given the recent experience with the cafeteria services, I mean, this is something that, as a board, we should probably understand where else are we bringing cash into the system and what are the cash controls? But if this is not cash, then perhaps we should not become a cash donation. Or maybe we could split that apart in terms of, you know, how much is truly cash versus?
Well, I would say cash in this account is non-existent. It's just a term that we're using to reflect the donation.
Right.
But we could change it to checks.
Yeah.
Or just say donations.
Donations. Via check. Yeah, I can't recall a single time actual cash was brought in. It's, you know, it's usually, it's a check coming out of the PTC account that goes from the PTC account into the donations account here to then be expended with the vendor. We're actually, by doing this, often we can save money for the PTC because we have negotiated rates, other things we're able to buy through consortia and things like that. So it works out well, and it gives us the control, and it gives us the, you know, the ability to report out at the end, as Joanne has to do, for the state reporting and our per pupil, what have you. So it's, we want to keep the system going, but I think that, yeah, just that one word can be misleading for people who don't understand what we mean by it in this context. So we can change that.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good one.
And I just think it's also important, since you brought it up, Sherri, to kind of go back to the history or the genesis of that revisiting of the facilities rental rates. And it came from, you know, sort of the town bodies coming to us and saying, "We would like your facilities rentals to more reflect the wear and tear on the buildings, and we'd like to sort of make it a little bit more, you know, of a contribution to, you know, the maintenance of those buildings." So there was, you know, by virtue of that kind of, you know, ask by the towns, we really did need to look at sort of what we were charging, and so, anyway.
And there's a mechanism for review in the policy, I believe, with the committee, the Resources Committee. So we, we'll pull some information and pull it all together and share it with resources. And if it's important to bring forward, we'd be glad to do so.
Okay, all right. All right, so the final report is the Internal Services Report with regards to that fund. And just as a reminder, what goes through that fund are claims for health insurance and all the associated costs like stop insurance, ASO fees and the like. And then our life, accidental death and dismemberment, and the long-term disability. So those are captured here. Other types of employee benefits, such as tuition reimbursement, retirement supplement, workers' count, those are all part of the general fund appropriation, and they don't find their way into this fund at all, just to be clear on that. So it's interesting, there's a lot of moving parts in this fund. It's a significant fund which tracks over $14 million worth of transaction, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. And yet with all the moving parts, you're going to see that we really came out with a plus balance of 186,289. And so it's kind of a remarkable process that we go through with all of our numbers and back and forth with Joe Spurgeon, and here we are. The board's contribution to the fund is consistent year over year. Our operating budget is set, and that's what we send into the fund. Employee contributions are budgeted. We've had some changes within this past year that have increased them. And so we were on the plus side there. And then the retiree cobras are going down. We are actually losing more retirees out of our plan, either to the state plan or just coming off the plan altogether. So our revenues were $14,338,900. Moving down to expenditures, if you take a look at the projection of $12,751,235, compare it to the actual of $12,645,919, it's a difference of $105,000. That's basically a claim, one way or the other. That was an amazingly close projection that was done. We received stop loss reimbursement last summer that was offsetting some of the expenditures of $239,000. We had an increase in our ARIK subsidy this past year, and that's not a given. That's a usage number, it depends on usage and the types of drugs. And so that went up, that we were favorable on that for $133,696. The HSA deposit, the employer's portion was fairly close. The administrative services fee, Joe did an amazing job negotiating that down for us. And he really got it down almost 20% for us, which was really great. The stop loss insurance, we saved through a cooperative bid with the town beyond what we had planned in the budget, because we did have some planned savings there. It went down even more. By splitting out the stop loss, the aggregate, we kept with Cigna. And we went with Berkshire for the specific stop loss, the individual stop loss, and partnered with the town on that. We went out to bid on the group life, ADND and LTD, and we saved $16,946 on that. And then the service fee associated with all of our federal reporting, in addition to Joe's fee of $75,000, bumped us over in that area of $11,377. So overall, because of all of the savings that we had and the capitalizing on our stop loss insurance, expenditures were below budget by $669,000. And when we reforecasted the budget for FY 2019, we anticipated that. These were known numbers. And so when we did that projection, we actually offset our budget increase moving into next, this current year, '19, by $853,544, you may recall that. It actually took our budget increase down from three-something to two-something. And so when you take a look at the numbers just moving down here, we started with a fund balance of $2,898,745. The net change for the year was an increase of $271,876. So on the books, you're going to see a fund balance of $3,176,21. However, if you take a look at the calculation for the board's responsibility of 60% of a corridor of 125%, $2,130,788 of that $3,170 needs to be put aside in the event, albeit possibly unlikely, but in the event that we go into aggregate. And, you know, a lot of people say it can't happen. However, we had a huge claim a few years ago that was almost $2 million. So there's always a possibility of something happening. And then if you take off our commitment to our FY 2019 budget of $853,544, you're really left with $186,289 over the reserve and the budget commitment. That's really close. And one of the things that happened at year-end is, you're going to see in the narrative, I started becoming a little concerned because we watch these claims every single week. They post to our ledger on a weekly basis, and we just keep track of them. And the claims for July alone of this summer were $1,433,140. And then in August, $1,364,189. The average claims that we're budgeting are just around $1 million a month, a little bit over. So right here, there's the potential for some significant erosion of that fund balance. So what I had asked the town to do is allow us to transfer $300,000 of our remaining balance this past year into the fund, which was within our rights, I think, to do. And I was not allowed to do that. So I don't say that to be argumentative or anything. I just felt based on these numbers, it was a prudent step to take. And so the response was that if you do need the money, come back and we'll approve a special appropriation. But I did want to put that out there, I wanted the board to know that these numbers are big in July and August, and there is the potential for an overrun in these accounts based on the average budget per month that we have currently. And I don't want to end on that unhappy note.
But I think it's an important reminder that. Our plan year runs September 1 through August 31st. Right, so it's not a July 1 plan year. So now that, one of the things we're still doing with the plan and sort of learning is about how it functions when the majority, if almost all of our employees are moved over to an HSA. You know, so instead of a PPL plan where your expenses will likely be more consistent, I would imagine because of co-pays, what have you, now that we have deductibles in place and out-of-pocket maximums and coinsurance, and, you know, there's different parts to the plan. As more and more employees are moving over, what we're seeing, my layman's view, is that as the plan year goes on and people reach and exceed their deductible, then more costs are being borne into the plan. Because in the, you know, in the beginning, it's, the deductible is paying part of that. But once they shift over to the coinsurance, it becomes a 90-10 split. So it's 90% is being covered by the plan and only 10% by the user. So I think a part of it is still us understanding how moving over into an HSA impacts the finances in these systems. And Joe has been a great partner and mentor in all of this to help us to understand. The other part, I think that's important, is while we did save some money with the co-bidding for the aggregate stop loss, we did move it from 120% to 125%. So by, we saved some money by going up to 125. But that does mean that we have to meet the corridor expectations of 60%. That extra 5% is a sizable number that we have to fill that gap and make up the difference in the reserve.
Brendan? If I may, just one other comment. We do not have the IBNR, the incurred but not reported number from Cigna yet. That's pending. And it's currently at over, just slightly over $1 million. With the high claims in both July and August, if they bump that up, which they may because of the large numbers, that may eat into that 186 completely. So that's something that you just, you know, for future thoughts, might want to keep in mind. And when I get that number, I certainly will share it with Ed Resources and the rest of the board. Brendan?
So just so I have it completely straight, relative to this past fiscal year's budget, we underspent by $500,000 because of the fact that you saw, you know, claims that were higher than normal to the tune of about $400,000 a month for this past summer. You went to the town and said, "We'd like to take $300,000 of the $500,000 that we underspent for this past fiscal year and put that into the Internal Services Fund to essentially protect ourselves against the high claims that would come in." And the answer was, "No, we're not going to do that."
Well, the answer was, "Come back in the event that you need it, and we'll provide you with a special appropriation."
Okay.
So I have a question, though.
Just on the special appropriation, do you have any sense as to what that requires? Does that require the Board of Finance, Town Council, does anyone know?
My belief is it's both. In the past, when we've gone for a special appropriation, it's been both the Town Council and the Board of Finance.
Okay, all right.
I thought that under the policy, it was automatic for the Board of Finance to look at the fund balances and fund it.
At the 60-40.
At the 60-40. Is that not correct under the policy?
Yeah, that is correct.
So we don't have to be the ones asking, that it's their duty to?
Once per year, so it's at the start of the fiscal year, I believe, is how the policy is written.
Start at the fiscal year for the health insurance or for the school?
I believe it would be in June, July.
I think it's the start of the fiscal year.
That they would look to balance that off the 60-40. Which is a little challenging, given our plan year being September 1. We'll work on it. It's, we thought it was a reasonable request. We hadn't done that before, but thought that it was prudent to do so, given all of the variables. And the town wasn't comfortable doing that.
And my understanding is that they will fund it with cash. You know, they will fund the 40% or up to whatever is needed. However, there still needs to be a mechanism to move it. You know, you need to, they're not going to not move it, but they're going to need to have action after they move it.
Right, I mean, I think that's the biggest issue for me, and I'm sure most of us on the board, is that we shouldn't, this is a known expense, we've always had to deal with this fund. We've had, we had many long negotiations about this fund to make sure that there was money. I feel like we're going back. It's like, here we go again. And so I don't, I don't understand why there would need to be an approval to move money into an account that we have documentation of what the expenses are from the insurance company. And, I mean, did you get any recognition of why that would be an issue?
Well, interestingly enough, I really did not ask permission. I called over to inform them of the transaction, it's a journal entry.
Yep.
And I was informed, our books have to balance.
Right.
It's an important thing to do.
Right.
We don't want to be, have a different balance by $300,000. And I was told that, you know, that it would not be recorded.
So, I'm sorry, so Joanne, would this $300,000 have been $300,000 over what we needed to meet our 60% requirement under the policy?
It would have, based on these numbers. However, we don't have the IBNR yet. So once the IBNR comes in, we're going to have to see what impact that has.
Further adjustments might be needed.
I mean, these are really big numbers for two months straight. They're significant.
It was an attempt to be proactive, given the way that the books were balanced at the end of the year. Again, the, we hadn't done that before, so certainly we, Joanne and I talked about it and understood their hesitation. We still, we thought it was a good thing to do. And we'll explore the conversation with them in the future so that if we have a similar situation, that we've had the conversation in advance.
It's also not the full, you had $800,000 of overage for two months, and you asked for $300,000 of that $800,000, which isn't even the full amount by which we underspent last year's budget. So it was fairly reasonable, in my view.
So, just in any event, I know you're keeping track of it, but, so. So, just in any event, I know you're keeping track of it, but so in the year when it turns out that our claims are higher, that's going to happen when we're self-insured eventually, do we have a good record then of all the money that's actually gone back to the town via the self, uh, via being self-insured so that we can say, "Well, you know, in X years, we returned $500,000. You know, we asked to have that put into the account. You didn't agree with it. In any event, we now need $400,000 to go to our 60%." So that we kind of track the, just so that we don't have to be looking for those numbers on the fly at the time that happens.
Well, just in what we have in front of us, just briefly.
In the fund balances?
You can see that what we're using right here, the $853,000 from the fund balance as of 6/30/18 to offset the FY 2019 budget. So that's, that money is actually, and we budgeted to do that. So that was savings in the account that we're using to reduce the budget for next year. So right there is, I mean, for example, $853,000.
Right. So what we're doing with that $853 is we're splitting it into 12 different items to come out each month in terms of what we, what we are putting in forward for our budget for this, this current year.
Yes. So we can look to see, it's, yeah. We will get it. We will start looking to see what you're, what you're referring to and see what we can pull together.
Are there any other questions?
Just, I'll also just share one other piece just of, of this, that today I certified the excess cost reimbursement grant with the state, which I believe is, um, over $1 million. I don't, I don't know if you have the exact figure on top of mind, but I believe it was, that's what I believe too, yes. So $1.4 million for the excess cost grant reimbursement, which is, will be for our expenses last year. And that goes to the town again as an offset to our expenses in the special education area. So that was good news as well. Some good bookkeeping and some very careful work down in the special education department to get the, that work into the finance department as well. So, thanks.
Um, I just had one question, Joanne, on the retiree contributions. So of that half a million dollars or a little over, how many, do you have a sense for how many of those retirees are Medicare eligible?
I can get that for you. I don't want to guess at that number, to be honest with you. Let me get that for you.
Okay. Oh, that's great. Brendan?
Yeah, I just had one question going back to the beginning, which is on the EDO-1 to EFS transition. Is it the same methodology so that, you know, if you look at a time series of per pupil expenditures, is it going to be consistent?
It's the exact same concept, but it's mapping all of the accounts. And, um, the challenge with that is that a lot of accounts are allocated. So we accumulate all the expenditure in one account for accountability and management and supervision of those funds. But now when we report them out, well, 85% of a psychologist goes here and 15 goes here. Social workers are 55. So it's.
And does it match, does it match our full budget as well, or?
Oh, yeah. We have to tie into our full expended budget.
Okay. I got it.
And, and it really accumulates all expenditures for public schools. So it's your grants, it's your donations, it's any kind of in-kind services from the town. It's our operating budget. So those are the primary pieces.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Joanne. So, um, if I could get a motion to approve the end-of-year unaudited financial report, 2018 and current period transfers presented therein. Brendan, second. Penny. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. So moving on, I don't see anyone who wants to comment, so we'll move to announcements in future business. Dr. Lutze?
Sure. Our next meeting is September 17th, and there have been so many facilities projects this summer that we thought that we should put some, some time aside at our next meeting for Dan Clark and his team to go over what's happening at each of the five buildings. I think you'll be impressed as, as I am with all of the great work that's been done. Uh, and you heard Jan mention that they're still working on the gym over at West. Uh, so Dan can explain a little bit about that to us as well and some other things that are happening. You heard Bill mention the gym here at the high school, so it is spectacular, really a wonderful job. And they were also able to replace the scoreboards in the gym. So, um, Brookfield's coming down on Thursday for a volleyball scrimmage. Um, I'm not sure where I'll sit, you know, what color I'll wear, but it'll be a lot of fun.
Do we know where you're going to sit?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. But I'll probably be wearing red and black, but we'll see how it goes. We'll balance that out. But the, uh, the facilities update should be very informative. We'll go from there. And again, thank you to the board for adjusting the schedule to meet on Tuesday night this week. It's very helpful for all of us. And as you can see, our principals couldn't contain that for another week to wait for a Monday meeting, so thank you.
Sherri?
So I just have a question. I just feel like we should address, because the minutes states that the K9 search policy would be addressed at this, at tonight's meeting, and, and obviously it wasn't on the agenda, so can we just address that and?
Yes, thank you for that.
Tell the public when we could?
Yep. There were a couple of questions from the board. Um, you know, one, for instance, around how many in our, how many school districts in our DURG have such a policy and things like that. And we expanded a little bit just to look around. We asked 10 districts, well, nine other districts in us, and it's not helpful at all in that four of them do not have a policy and five of them do, you know, that permit it. So pretty much right down the middle. So we are continuing to develop some more information around this and think that more conversation is in order for the board, I think, for the administration as we continue to move forward. So we're going to find and develop ways to gather some feedback from the community, from people, from those that would be impacted by such a policy, share with them information we have from other districts that may or may not have this, maybe have some experts speak as well in the legal system about the, the outcome, the results, the process of something like this so that the board can make the most well-informed decision possible prior to having it as an action item back on the agenda. So we're working on what that process will look like, and we'll be sharing it out with the board and with the public soon. Thank you.
I meant to mention that.
Thank you. All right. So if I could get a motion to adjourn. Sherri, second. Brendan, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.